This conference will now be recorded.
It is 6:35 PM on March 15th, 2021, and the Village of Pittsburgh Planning Board and Zoning Board Appeals is meeting virtually pursuant to orders from Governor Cuomo during this coronavirus pandemic. A link to the meeting is on the village website, and any member of the public can click on that link to observe our discussions today. So with that said, I would like to make a motion to open our regular meeting.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Motion carries.
So all five members of the planning board are present, and all voted to open the meeting. So that said, we're discussing some meeting minutes, but how about let's start by getting the applications out of the way. So we have two applications on our agenda. I think the only thing I'd like to discuss about those is go over what the status is, and I'm also, if any members of the board are looking for any additional application materials, I think it makes sense to request that. So if we want anything else submitted by the applicants. But so let's start with discussion about the two applications which are for... We had one from Chandeliers for a variance for a sign. That was at 1 South Main Street. And then we had a second application for a variance for a porch for a front setback, and that was at 36 Monroe Avenue. Due to the short time gap between our last meeting and this meeting, we had some administrative difficulties with those, and we weren't able to get all of our required administrative process completed before the meeting. So we are going to reschedule both applications so that we can finish all the administrative steps we need. And the proposal, I believe, was to have a special meeting on April 5th or April 6th to discuss both applications. So first of all, the members of the board, does anyone have a preference for Monday or Tuesday? Usually, we like to do Mondays.
Lightly Tuesday because that is Easter Monday.
So it's a holiday?
Yes.
Monday? Is Easter Monday a holiday?
I may be out of town. Let me double check. Or at least I'll be returning late, and let's see. Nope, it's Good Friday. So Easter Monday is not a holiday. It's Good Friday that is. And so I'm here in town. I don't have a preference.
Either day, I'm good.
Come on in.
Oh, either day is fine.
And we have Mike on the line. Mike, you have a preference?
Either one is fine.
Okay.
I like Mondays for tradition's sake.
I do too.
Easier to remember.
It's easier, right, right.
All right, and let's just try to stick to Monday then for that reason. So that'd be Monday, April 5th. And then do we want to stick to like 6 o'clock, or is there another time preference?
6 o'clock.
6 is nine.
Okay, do you want to have a workshop beforehand?
Yes.
Yeah. So then...
So we'll do the same format then, say workshop 6 o'clock, the meeting will start at 6:30?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yep.
If that's what people want to do, that's fine with me.
Yeah, that works for me. Well...
Okay. So Mindy, do we have to make a motion about any of this, or?
No, because you haven't opened the public hearing. You're just going to adjourn it to the April 5th.
Okay. Said, as far as the only other topic regarding these applications was, do we want anymore, anything else from the applicants? I had a discussion with the building inspector about this about two weeks, a little under two weeks ago. And for the sign application, I was looking for clar- if clarification on the location of the signs.
Justin, wait, can we roll back? I apologize for interrupting you. If you're going to discuss the substance of the applications, then you should open the public hearing on them. And we should probably also do the conflict of interest disclosure.
Okay, well, should we... Is discussing over what might be missing from applications a substantial discussion?
Yes.
Okay, well, maybe should we just skip this then?
I don't know. I, we can talk about it, right? So we might as well get it out of the way, as long as we open it up.
I'm a little concerned about opening it up if the applicant's been told we're not going to address it, and if it hasn't been publicly noticed. I mean, it's one thing to publicly state that we're going to be adjourning the meeting because it wasn't publicly noticed and to push it over. But I think that if we're going to talk about the substance of the application, that needs to happen when the, after the public hearing has been opened for that application with the applicant present.
Okay, even just for like what might be missing, something like that? Okay, good. All right.
All right, I think that makes sense, and the applicants were told we were not going to be substantially disrupting the applications tonight. So we'll defer any discussions then to our workshop.
And will April 5th give us enough time to do all the proper notices?
Dorothea proposed that date, so I would say that she made sure of it, but I will double check that as well right now.
Because I don't remember off the top of my head what the, you know, how much notice the mailers have to get. I know it's 10 days for the publication, but I don't have the other dates in my head.
So I believe what happens is the BP post needs to receive something by this Wednesday morning, which would be the 17th, and they will print it the following Thursday, which is the 25th. And then that would be in print 11 days before our meeting on the 5th. So I think that works out.
Yeah, Dorothea had set it up so that as soon as you decide on the date of the meeting, the next day I could send those notices out.
So the notices were already mailed, right? Do they have to be mailed again?
Yes.
Because the date of the meeting is different, okay. I have a question, speaking of the notices.
Well, hold on a second. That's a good question for Mindy, because my understanding is if we've mailed a notice that said they'd be discussed today, and then we announce today when discussion will continue, that may be sufficient. That's how a public hearing usually works. But for any notices that were not made, such as in the newspaper, that needs to be redone. So I guess the question is, do mailings need to be redone or not?
Were the mailings substantively correct? I remember that there was some discussion about the content of the notices, and I don't remember how that played out.
I understand there were errors in the notice substantially. And I believe the date is one of those substantial things. So if we're having a new date, we would, we would have to send it out to everyone, to the papers and the and the neighbors, as I understand it.
Okay, so we have to renotice, we have to send the letters out. Right, okay. And then I just wanted to double check, because I remember we also went around on the timeframe for that. So 2:10, 30, 31, 4...
Yeah, we were waiting for Steve. We were waiting for Steve to clarify which sections of code the variances were for.
They're all public hearings. It's all under Article 31.
No, but for the notice that goes out...
Section of the zoning code, right, got it.
Yeah, so I think a basic statement that makes... So first of all, I think our zoning code says what those letters are supposed to contain.
It just says, "The village clerk shall provide public notice to the following by email."
And then if you scroll down, it just says what the...
Public notice content, right. The date, time, and place of the public hearing, the property involved, by street address or general description, the general nature, scope, and purpose of the proposal, and where additional information on the matter can be obtained.
So I think what the questions I have is, is if we have an application for a variance, is it sufficient for the notice to just state, "They have an application from X and X address to request an area variance to construct a porch"? Is that an adequate statement, or do we really need to say what section of code that the variance is for?
Neither. So you can either, I think the better way to do it would be to be construct, you got an area variance for the requirement of a 10-foot side, side back, no, no, no. Start again. An area variance for a three-foot setback, where, side setback where the code requires 10 feet to facilitate the construction of a porch attached to the house. You know, you have to say more than for a porch, you need to let people know, what about the porch? You know, what's a public hearing about? And so, I mean, I think the best practice would be to say both the content of the variance request, you know, three feet where 10 feet is required, and to give a citation to the portion of the code where that requirement can be found. But at the very least, it has to, in words described, so that people can understand. You know, it's, you're seeking a three-foot setback where 10 feet is required.
Okay, so for Marina, for variances, it's always code-related. So they're requesting relief from some section of code, and it's usually a numbers thing. So if you get that in there, that makes sense to me. For the planning board, usually it's, the nature of the application is different. So they're, so I don't know how to word that, but like for our last meeting, a simple description of it is to what, construct a pavilion and landscaping and reconfigure a parking lot? Would a basic description like that be sufficient?
Right, at 7 to 10 State Street, Village of Pittsburgh.
Okay, so play the review with a general description of what they're proposing. Yeah, okay. Marina, does that make sense to you?
It does, and if I have any issues or I'm not clear on it, I'll just make sure to refer to Steve, and you know, I'll make sure that you guys are always copied in on the first draft of everything I send. And if, if any reason, I don't hear back from you, I'll just refer to Steve if I'm unclear.
Yeah, most of the time, I think Linda was able to, our last secretary, she was able to do these on her own, because most things are pretty straightforward. But sometimes she would seek input from Mindy or somebody else to help with the wordsmithing on that if it was confusing. So I think most of the time, it should go pretty easy. Okay, so I think we're done with those applications then for, we're going to be, we agreed to have a special meeting on April 5th at, with a workshop PM and a meeting at 6:30. And I believe our discussion we just wrapped up was getting the notices in the paper and making sure Marina had clarification of what needs to be in those notices. And if you need to get input from Steve on the code citations, you can do that.
Great, thank you.
All right, so I'm good with that wrapping that discussion up. So we can continue back onto our next agenda item, which we're going over, some board procedures and documents. Okay, so let's get back into, before we go over a proposed new application deadline schedule for the year, let's get back into the nitty gritty of the timeline for our application process. And there's been a few discussions that have gone on about that. But the key, there's some key things that need to happen before the meeting. And one of the key things is, I believe it's about 19 days before our meeting, if it's on a Monday, the BP post needs to get the notice that we are going to have it so they can print it. So they need to get it on a Wednesday to print the following Thursday. Now, the question we had is, can we get through all of the preliminary stuff by that time? Typically, what happens when the application comes in, Steve works with the applicant, they get the form in, and there's some period of time to fix all the applicants, everything Steve wants to see in there. And we don't always know how long that's going to take. So often, we blow way past that deadline for noticing meetings. So in an ideal world, at the application deadline, Steve would look at it, he'd communicate to the applicant, hey, you need to submit A, B, and C. That would, with this proposed five-week schedule, they'd have approximately two weeks to work with Steve and the applicant to complete the application. And then we'd be able to make a decision as to whether to put it on the agenda and notify the paper. So that was the reason for the five-week schedule, is to give that process of time. I'm not, historically, that hasn't been completed in that timeframe. And it bleeds, you know, until almost a week before the meeting. Per code, we have a hard cutoff for applicants of having submissions in a week before our meeting. And the board obviously needs time to read all the applications and prepare things. So we want to get everything in a week before our meeting, that makes sense. So I believe it's due at Friday at noon, which is a week before the meeting. And I believe that's in our applications handling code. And that makes sense. So then ideally, our meeting packets, we'd have everything in from the applicants, our meeting packets could be sent out to the board on that Friday afternoon. It could be posted on the village website. And then everyone would have at least a week to look things over. So at least that standpoint, I think everyone would agree that that makes sense. Is that correct? To try to wrap all this stuff up about a week before our meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely, yep.
In terms of the process of beforehand, having this five, the application deadline, five weeks before the meeting, again, that is long, that would give Steve two weeks to work with the applicant to get things worked out before we need to send notice to the paper. The question is, what happens if it isn't done in that two-week timeframe, which is how it's usually gone? I've been reluctant in the past to pull the applications, because usually they come in at some point. And I've never been interested in having applicants apply like two or three months before a meeting to get through with it. And I know some of this takes a little bit of time. So I'll just open this up for discussion. Does anyone have any thoughts?
I have a thought. And the thought is that I think that it's very dangerous to open a public hearing on an application that's incomplete. Because there are some types of applications that have default approval requirements, like site plan approval. There may be others in the new code that we haven't stumbled across yet, that may be landmines waiting to be triggered. But there's really no reason for the public or this board to review an application that is substantively incomplete. It's a waste of your time.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing that comment. So I guess the question is, it could be completed in the next week, but we don't know. Well, obviously, we don't know if an applicant is going to submit something or not. So it sounds like Mindy's advice is, if the application isn't completed to the point where the building inspector thinks it's ready to review by the notice deadline, it sounds like, per Mindy's recommendation, is we just don't put it on the agenda, so we don't go through with that notice.
Right, and I'm saying something else also, which is that if an application is incomplete, substantively incomplete, and it's for, you know, it's for a major application. You know, I think that residential area variance or a lot, you know, a lot-line combination, you could probably not be quite as technical about. But for a substantial application, I think that the applicant should receive a notice of incomplete application that sets forth in writing what the deficiencies are. If we're talking about best practices.
Right. Right. I also think that, I don't know how to accomplish this, but I think it's only, you know, be fair to the applicant, you know, to work right at step one and explain, you know, what a complete application is. And these are the, and these are the dates. I think, you know, we can manage disappointment, you know, by being very clear upfront how this works. And I think that could easily apply to everyone, large, large applicants and small.
And the other thing I would just mention is that technically, the code enforcement officer is a separate office. It's an independent office. The code enforcement officer doesn't work for the board, he doesn't work for the trustees, he doesn't work for the mayor. The code enforcement officer is an independent office, so we can make suggestions about how the board would like to see these applications handled. But this, none of the boards can tell the code enforcement officer how to do his job.
But then the applicant, you know, gets caught in the middle.
Right. And that's a conversation to have with the code enforcement officer as to why these recommendations benefit him and the applicant and the boards. But I just, you know, I wanted to make clear that we can't really tell Steve what to do.
Right, right, but that would be a great meeting for us all to come together. Because I think, you know, we want to do our job and also not make our and just be as, as clear for the applicant as we can be. I think that's in everybody's best interest and Steve's as well.
Okay, so Steve can have his own process for reviewing an application, I think, and determining whether he thinks it's ready for the board to review. Now, often, I believe that's what Mindy's suggesting. Steve does not set our, the board's agenda. He's independent of us. And Steve does not participate in the decision to send out notices for the public hearings either. So I just want to go over some of this, because the machinations of this get something, somehow tricky, and I would like this process to go a lot smoother, because we tend to have, at the last minute, dealing with some things that would go really smoothly if we just dealt with them earlier. And dealing with things at the last minute are not good. For, when we have, the application deadline is five weeks before the meeting, or at least four weeks. As long as we start this process early, it can go really smoothly and not be an issue. But so I believe Mindy is, I believe Steve's job is to determine whether he believes the application is ready for the board to review. And we had a long discussion with this with the trustees about the code, and they did not want the application to be declared complete necessarily. Because that becomes tricky if the board wants to see something and disagrees with the building inspector. If he thinks it's complete, then the application, the applicant may not be obliged to submit anything more.
Yeah, we've had this discussion a couple of times on and off throughout the years, right? And we've colloquially described it as complete with a big C or complete with a little c. And what I'm talking about is complete with a little c, sufficiently complete for the board to review. And that means that the application contains all the stuff that either the town, the village code requires or that the code enforcement officer deems is not necessary for the application. Right, I mean, you're getting applications that don't even go that far. You know, you're opening public hearings on applications that are so incomplete that you can't really properly consider them. I'm not talking about a situation where this board, in its discretion, decides that there are more things that are needed to evaluate an application properly, what I would consider a complete application with a capital C. What I'm talking about is a, an application that, on its face, gives you sufficient information to conduct an intelligent review. And you've seen a bunch of, you know, applications in the past three years that don't meet that criteria. And they shouldn't have been noticed, in my opinion.
Okay, so usually, behind the scenes, how this works is, at some point, several weeks prior to the meeting, I ask Steve, hey, what do we have for applications on the agenda? He shows them to me, and then I usually tell him, well, this, this doesn't look like it's complete. Can we get A, B, and C added to it? And then sometimes he agrees, sometimes he disagrees. I think per what Mindy's statement is, is if we disagree, that's still his charge. And so my, if I make those suggestions to him, they're just suggestions, and he doesn't have to go with them. And, and that's usually how it actually goes, is if we disagree, you know, that's where it is. And then the board gets to take a look at whatever it is.
And the applicant waits another month.
Right.
So most of the time, we come to a general agreement, and that's fine. So the other question I had is, I don't know of any way for this to go smoother here, as to get more complete applications and to make sure we have what the board wants. I know some boards will have a, like an agenda review meeting or something like that, where they'll take a look at draft applications and see if they're ready to add to their agenda. So they'd have two meetings a month. One is to look at the pending agenda items, the others to actually conduct the review. Normally, I've just had these conversations with Steve behind the scenes, is, okay, this application looks like we need items A, B, and C. That could also be delegated around to different other board members. I'm not sure what options there are for this process, or what makes sense for how to get that done. I don't like to speak for the board outside of, unless we've actually made an agreement. I'll share my own opinions, but I don't want to speak for the board.
Justin, I think you do a nice job being an intermediary between what we generally would want, at least from my experience, and what Steve is looking to provide. I think Steve, as the general first face of the application process to the applicant, may tend to look towards expediency a little bit more perhaps than we do naturally. I think that's okay, but that's where some of those expectations of the applicant, and when they come before us, we can slow it down. So to the degree that your conversations with Steve, I can be very helpful in mitigating that risk. I think that's okay, and if it requires for me a resolution by this board to give you some of that authority, I'd be happy to. Again, I defer to the law and Mindy on those thoughts.
Can we, can we back up a little? Can we, can we back up a little bit, Justin? What, what problem are we solving here?
Okay, so my question is giving Steve some feedback early on as to what might, what additional information we might like to see from applicants. Maybe we're going about this the wrong way, which I think is what you're alluding to. Another option is to just have Steve fill out a checklist that says this is the requirement. This is present, check it off. And I've tried doing that with building inspectors before, and they haven't been very excited about doing that. And they're usually people with a construction background and procedural documentation. And, you know, bureaucratic documents is not usually something that is enthuses them. I'm not going to speak about any particular person, but that's just been the general observation is they're not document editors, usually they're construction people. But this is just a generalization. So I haven't, I've tried working with, I think it was Floyd, on that respect. That was several years ago, and he didn't want anything to do with filling out a checklist to verify the application was complete. Steve might be more willing to do that. But, so I think the general goal is, how do we get fairly complete applications by the publishing deadline? And how do we convey information to the building inspector as early as possible to, if something, something more is desired? My
or needed? I mean, I think we're, you know, Mindy has given us, you know, small case, uppercase. So I think, I think it sounds like there's a difference between what is needed and what is, what is desired. What is even this, wow, I'm kind of getting lost in the weeds here.
I think it's okay to let Steve make up his mind. And if he wants assistance from us, I think Justin's a great voice for us in that regard. And if he thinks that he doesn't need it, then he's welcome to bring that applicant forward as, you know, without input from us. It's a risk to the applicant and hopefully he, he couches it the right way in his communication to them. But that's kind of on him, right?
I think it just sets up a kind of an unfortunate and, you know, kind of needless confrontation that has played out in, you know, public meetings. I'm, you know, I hate, I hate to see that. And I would hate to, you know, just say, okay, this is, we think this is incomplete. Sorry applicant, it's going to be another, it's going to be another month.
Right. Right.
It does sound to a certain extent, and I'm gonna, you know, obviously, I'm probably moving off of this board, so I don't want to overreach here. But as I'm looking through the code here, it seems like, and based on what Mindy is saying, you know, there are different swimming lanes. And each, you know, the building inspector has his own autonomy. And this board has its autonomy. And there's a risk to each of those parties if you swim into the other lane, right? And, and so you can't, the building inspector has to make his own determination of completeness. And I wonder if there's some natural hesitancy if this board provides a checklist. Well, you know, it almost overreaches and says, well, this is what we're telling you to do. And, you know, maybe that's not the intent, but I could almost see it being perceived that way. And, and instead, what might need to happen is that there's got to be a natural sort of a collaboration where we're saying, well, there are actually two big Cs, it sounds like. There's the big C of the building inspector who says, this is done now and I've done my job, you know, based on my professional competence. And then this board, according to the code too, is able to, you know, either waive requirements or whatever else in determining that we consider the application to be big C complete. And then there are a couple of little Cs. There's actually an incomplete state that this board is allowed to consider with the pre-application conference. And then there's another, maybe a small C where we're actually able to consider the application, right? And, and so I think there are those four different states and, and, you know, mutually two distinct swimming lanes for the two different positions, the building inspector and this board. Is my reading at least, and I don't know if it helps to understand that way or not.
Well, my thought is on the checklist, the checklist, our code establishes what is required for an application. And the building inspector's job is simply to say whether each and every one of those items is there or is not. And then the building inspector, I don't think he has, so I think he effectively does is would say, okay, these items are missing, but I think it's okay for the board to look at it anyway. I think that's effectively what he's doing. But that doesn't all, like I said, we don't want things coming to our meeting that, you know, the board tells the applicant, we need, you know, A, B, and C. And you gotta wait another month, that's what Susan said. So I think most of the time, I have a conversation, I look at the applications, I have a conversation with Steve, and most of the time, it gets worked out then and there. And usually that goes fine. But, you know, I'm just bringing, just mentioning it that this is how it goes. Do you want to do it a different way? Is there something different we want to do? I'm just bringing that up.
I think, could, could there also be, there's a certain amount of discretion on the part of the building inspector and on this board. And, you know, which is the, the need for informal communication between the two parties as well to ensure that what we decide as far as complete is also what Steve helps to facilitate, to bring to the table. And, and I'm not sure if we can ever guarantee that the reading of the code is going to be the same with both parties or what we determine after considering the application is what we actually think we need. You know, and that's why it seems to be, the code leaves open the possibility of us asking for other materials as well.
Justin, let me ask you a question, are you uncomfortable with the authority that you've been acting upon but not yet formally given?
Which, Justin, are you asking this of?
I don't, like I said, I don't mind sharing my opinions. I just don't like speaking on behalf of the board when, you know, the board hasn't decided to do so. So, but kind of in as administrative role behind the scenes, this type of thing. Anybody can talk to the building inspector and say, hey, you know, this doesn't seem quite right, can we add this? So any board member has that, that right. So I'm not saying it's necessarily a problem. I'm just saying this is how it goes and asking if anyone wants to do anything differently. And the biggest thing is I want to get more complete applications, preferably by the time we need to notice them. And we've typically noticed them anyway, even if they're incomplete. And that's going to, if we decide to just stop doing that, you know, and I'm not sure what the ramifications are of it, but maybe Steve will start reviewing them earlier, so he has time to complete them. That would be my hope.
So, Justin, come back to my question then. Would you find it valuable in your communications with Steve to have it be with the weight of the board through an approval process granting you sort of that authority of pre-discussion? Or do you think it's best to operate independently, quote in quotes, as you've sort of done or expressed that you've done?
I think the only way to act on behalf of the board is actually have a meeting at that time where we actually discuss what we want to do. Because we can't discuss all of this behind the scenes via emails. That wouldn't be proper. So this is the only way I can think of that we can actually work is if we see the applications and if there's any particular person wants to comment on something I think is missing, just alert the building inspector.
Okay, so then we can leave it open-ended as it's been, which is essentially independent board members reaching out to Steve as they deem appropriate for any given application. And that's what you've been doing, I think that's worked. And if others want to participate in that, they can do so independently.
Yeah, I think that's, that would be fine. The only thing is typically, we don't have rough applications going out to everybody. So typically, I take a look at them first, send my initial comments. Steve takes those and works on getting a better application together. And then it goes out to the rest of the board members, that's how it's typically done. If people want to see what the draft applications are earlier on in the process, that's fine too.
I don't need to personally, I don't know about anybody else, Susan, Joanne? No, all right, so that's a bunch of no's. What that suggests to me is if you feel that that preliminary discussion, when you're looking at a preliminary application without us reviewing it, if you'd like for us to sort of suggest here or have a resolution that we'd like for you to act as a liaison to the board in advance of an application process, maybe we can draft something to that effect.
Okay, I don't know if that's needed or not, but I appreciate the discussion. And I appreciate hearing people's opinions on this matter. Because again, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board when I don't know what the rest of the board wants. So I've been explaining how these things typically go. And anyway, well.
Mindy shook her head no, suggesting, I think, Mindy, that we didn't need a resolution to be effect to allow it to continue as it's been.
No, you don't need a resolution for that.
Right, and, and Justin, we're, you know, we're not asking for opinions, you know, other, other than is there enough material for us to look at? Though I don't think, you know, that's wading into, you know, any substantive evaluation or consideration of the applicant, application, you know, kind of beyond something administrative.
I agree. I also would suggest simply that, Justin, in my time on the board, which is brief, my confidence in you is very high and appreciative of the work that you do in collaborating with everybody here. And it is through that, that this trust that I have extends. If not for you, I don't know if I would share this exact same opinion.
Oh, thank you. That's appreciated as a comment. And I've observed boards have members that have used or misused some of their authority in ways that are not appropriate, in my opinion, to kind of direct an outcome. And that is something I've always tried very hard not to do. And we've always had healthy discussions about applications. And members of the board often change my mind as we discuss it. We, you know, we all do our research, we all walk in with some thoughts and we discuss it. And that's always been very healthy. And we've always had respectful discussions that are substantive about the application. So I thought that all worked well, we've always worked well as a group.
Let's keep it going as it's been then, at least for this part of the process.
Okay, so I think the direction for Marina then is basically going to be, if the applications are incomplete at the publishing deadline, then we're just going to leave them off the agenda unless it seems really minor. So the porch variance application, oh, anyway, I shouldn't talk about that. Let's talk about something that we've seen in the past.
A lot line adjustment.
A lot line adjustment, you just let that go through. Now, the we had with the pavilion, I think at one point in time, we had some issues where they're expecting to be on our agenda. And we had some issues where Steve hadn't completed his zoning code compliance review and stuff like that. So we had applicants with the expectation that they would be on our agenda. And then the preliminary discussions hadn't happened yet, and that was a little clumsy. And I think they did go into the BP post and all of that. So really, I think the fault there would be if the review of code compliance isn't completed, it doesn't get noticed.
I agree.
So is that, to clarify from the code here, so we've got under the, the pre-application conference, it seems like this might be the, the relevant section. It says, materials presented during the pre-application conference may be incomplete and/or conceptual and design. However, a formal complete application is required to be considered for approval. So it sounds like there are two things, there's, you're considering it, and then you're possibly approving it. And that has to be complete. So whose completeness determination is that based on? Is, so that's the noticing requirement, which is by the clerk. And is that based upon the building inspector's completeness determination? Or is it this board's completeness determination?
I have two comments on that, if I may jump in here. So the, the section on the pre-application conference, that is a, an optional conference that happens at the request of the applicant. So I don't think that we can consider all incomplete applications to be pre-application conference stuff. But the building inspector owns the decision as to whether an application is complete. This board doesn't, or sufficiently complete to notice, this board doesn't own that decision and the clerk doesn't own that decision. And the issue is that if the building inspector passes off an incomplete application as complete and it gets to the board and the board determines that it's incomplete, then I think the, the short answer is the board tells the applicant and the code enforcement officer that the application is incomplete and needs to be rescheduled. And hopefully, after one or two times of that occurring, it won't happen again.
What about the clause under the review board action, action 21030 dot four D about additional application requirements? So it seems like it comes to this board and then we can ask for additional information deemed necessary for a complete and adequate review. So is that a different kind of a case where it doesn't actually stop and get sent back to the building inspector? And this board directly intervenes and says, hey, we just want this additional thing?
Right, so like subsection C of 21031, 34 refers to whether there are requirements that are set forth in the zoning code that are not met. And this board has the authority to waiver, modify the application requirements. If one of these findings are met. And typically, in the past, what you've done is that you've asked Steve for a determination that the requirement is inappropriate or unrelated to the application. So he is, he recommends that you waive it and you waive it. D says that in addition to the requirements imposed by the zoning code, this board can ask for other stuff too. You're not constrained by the itemized list of what the zoning code says needs to be part of an application.
Okay. Yeah, that, that helps me, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have an example of something we've asked for in the past? Is we had a landscaping plan submitted by an applicant. And we asked them to give us a list of what are the mature sizes of the trees that are going to be in there. That's just an example of additional information we asked for. So that would give the better board, the board a better job of being able to evaluate how well will it provide screening to, you know, for whatever aesthetic purpose they're looking for. That's just an example of something.
Right, and in that same application, I think that there was also something about the proximity of trees and to various culverts and draining drainage devices and whether the roots would impinge on them and stuff like that.
The stuff comes up.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I think we've kind of gone over this to pretty good length here about this whole initial phase before noticing this. The only things before this, I'm not sure if Marina is, how familiar she is with all these steps and what happens if they aren't done. But there's the county planning referral, there's the secret determination and some other things. And there's a few things that need to be done early in the process. I just want to make sure Marina is aware of this. We have to do an environmental review, which means it's a type one action in Seeker. We have to send notice letters to all the other agencies, like the trustees or anyone else that might be involved in this. And that takes 30 days to complete. So if we do that in that first week after we get the application, we can actually, that time limit can be expired and we can act on the application. If that's not done right away, then again, and this has happened frequently. then again, and this has happened frequently, that applicant comes into a meeting, and then they're told, oh, we can't do anything with this. We gotta wait another 30 days for the environmental notice to go out. The same thing with county planning. They need like a good four weeks to look at things. In general, residential applications don't need to go to, I guess residential some go to county planning. We only get about one application a year that we have to do the environmental review on. So we're not. Yep.
So, you know, you're looking at that list with 35 different items on it?
Yes.
That's what you're kind of working through? How about, I mean, I would be willing to sit down with you because I think it would benefit, you know, with some grouping, you know, so that if there's, you know, a bigger project, then this is what happens. And if it's a smaller project, then this is what happens. And I just, I think that list could just benefit from some some different organization. And I'd be happy to do that with you. Because I think as going through it now, as is, I mean, I don't know. It's a lot to digest, I would think, even, you know, I've been on the board. So I can just imagine for Marina, it's like, yikes. So what do you think, Justin? And Dave and Joanne about that list?
Do you want me to share it? The screen is that helpful at all there?
Yeah. Well, I think I was just looking to mention to Marina to make sure she's aware of it, of things that take a long time that are out of our control. So, and I agree with Susan, maybe it makes sense to clarify, for this type of project, A, B, and C need to be done.
Right, right. I mean, right. Yep.
I want to just comment as well. I can make a note of these things, but they're sending things to county planning. That is Steve's function, for sure. Completing the actual environmental review, that's another thing that Steve himself handles. I can, when the application comes in, you know, I leave some flexibility in my checklist. I could even add some more space for those kinds of, like, other kinds of checkbox items that need to be completed. But beyond kind of just really nagging Steve to like, you gotta get it done, you gotta get it done, I don't have really any role at all in completing those forms, and I don't know who they go to or anything like that.
I think the main thing used to be done is, was this task done or not? And that's important. So I think it makes sense for you to keep track of that, but you don't need to do the job, the task.
Yeah, I can absolutely, like I said, I can bug Steve as much as you want, you know, to make sure that it gets done and that it is done and report back to you. Can do.
Yeah, I think that's a great comment, Marina. When I looked at the list, I thought that in addition to Susan's comment, it would be helpful to identify who owns each item in the list. Because as I was going through it, I didn't think that Marina's stuff showed up until like item 20, which was published notice of public hearing.
Right.
Yeah, that is about where I kind of start chiming in.
Right. So it's a great list. It's very comprehensive, and it gives Marina a nice, some nice background information as to what these applications look like, what they involve, what to expect. But, you know, most of it really is stuff that we're expecting the code enforcement officer to do.
That's a good point. Okay, so we're going regrouping this and possibly regrouping it into things the building inspector needs to do, things that Marina needs to do. And Marina's already worked on her own checklist. So, I mean, this document is nothing more than a draft document that's meaningless on its own other than enumerating steps that are, that can happen in a suggested order.
Yeah, it's great. It's very comprehensive.
But.
Or go ahead.
I didn't know what you're, go ahead.
I was going to say, if you wanted to roll right into my checklist next, I'm happy to take down some notes. If there are certain things that you want me to just add a little note, like follow up with Steve here or something. But that's totally up to you guys.
Yeah, you go ahead and bring up your checklist, because I think that's kind of the key thing that is if things are missing from under.
Do you guys want me to kind of walk you through it, I guess?
Yeah, is this the current one that was in? So who's presenting? Is this Marina or is this Mr. Like?
I'm presenting it, and I've got about 10 different versions of these, I think. So Marina, does this look like the right one?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
So I created this kind of to be a checklist that can be applicable to any board. So that, you know, somebody, if they're coming in like myself, and they have to serve multiple boards, this is a checklist that encompasses kind of everything. So of course, at the top, we've got the general information on your meeting and the deadline. I created a space to the top right there to outline what exactly those applications are. And then at the bottom, I usually put if there's any minutes or any other items. Going through the receipt portion, the first thing upon receipt, I'm trying to make sure that I get it as soon as Steve is getting it, so that it gets time stamped in the village office and has that date on it. Timestamp everything. The initial check for completeness, that does fall to Steve. That second line, reviewing applications, building inspector and board rep checks for completeness, that's after, I think that's the point where like, Justin, you kind of go to Steve and you say, is there anything for this meeting? Steve says yes, and he sends it to you, then that's your kind of back and forth point. Then that third item is just kind of if there's any member items that any of the board members want to bring on, just so I kind of remember to reach out to you guys to see if there's anything personal that you need to bring into the meeting. And that completes that portion. The next part is where I can start.
Can we pause there, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Can we pause there? I mean, you may also receive some type of notice of incomplete application and additional submissions for a particular application. And that would be under the receipt part also. Because, I mean, the applications aren't necessarily static.
Okay.
Just as a suggestion for maybe what to do for that third meeting topic, is you can say, is if you want to send out a note to the entire board, whatever this is, three weeks, four weeks before the meeting, that says, we have pending applications for A, B, and C that are being looked at. And then ask the board members if they have any other agenda items they want to add to the agenda. People appreciate having a heads up a few weeks in advance, knowing how many things are going to be on the agenda and the general nature of what they are. But until they're complete, it's not important to know the details.
Okay. I will make sure to make that edit. All right. Then if there's nothing else, I'll move along into the materials. Let's see, that says, sorry, it's a little small. Make sure that the original applications get to building inspector law, so we can send them to Monroe County. That's an asterisk because it doesn't apply in every case. Next would be to create the go-to-meeting link, which I will be doing, I assume, from this meeting forward, as Justin's leaving us like up, unfortunately. Then I would be creating the agenda, and that is just examples of items that would go on the agenda. They're also how I usually word them in the packet. In parentheses, on that next one, you will see VP. That stands for Village and PZBA. So this item, this is how I let myself know that this item is only applicable to the village board and to the PZBA. It is not applicable to the HPP. That is where I'm creating the legal notice. Right underneath that is creation of the packet. Some extraneous items for both applicable only to HPP and to the PZBA. Justin, if you scooch a little bit to the right, so we can see the rest of that line. So that is my reminder to trigger the 300-foot notices. And this kind of comes before I start, you'll see a little further down is where I'm really plugging in and like all of my deadline dates. So don't be alarmed yet, like, if it seems like this might be something that needs to scooch up to the first section. I do have a deadline incorporated into there. The next bullet is to post the public facing packet. Dorothea mentioned that usually for the village board, she takes the content of the applications out and really only leaves things that the public needs. So that might not be applicable to you guys either.
Well, hold on a second here. Everything the board is looking at has to go in the meeting packet.
Right. Okay, so I can make a note that that is probably not, that's not applicable to you guys.
That's both the trustees and us. If they're looking at it and discussing it in the meeting, it needs to be on the website.
Right, so I.
The only exception that I can, that I know of is meeting minutes, is sometimes we leave meeting minutes out of the packets. Likewise, your legal notices, I don't know, do we put a copy of legal notices in the packets online? I'm not sure if that's required or not.
Dorothea usually compiles the packets for the village board. I did put legal notices into your packet. I saw that Linda was doing that as well. But I'm sorry, the things that Dorothea omits from the public facing packet are things like the treasurer's report, are things like the DPW, Steve's BI report. So I'm sorry, I misspoke when I suggested that they were taking out the application.
Yeah. Maybe it should not stream it to do the trustees matters. That stuff should all, all needs to be given to the public.
Okay, I can ask her about it, but that is what I understand. She has two different versions.
Yeah, but that's the trustees' business, and so I'll stay out of that, other than in general, everything before the, we'll just leave it as a joint comment, everything before the board, unless it's somehow privileged, it should be in that meeting packet that goes online. Unless it comes in so late, you don't have a chance to do that. And then if that's the case, we usually have to hand out printouts or present it on the screen or something like that to still, you know, present it to the public.
Okay.
Now, to move up, the create board packet, I just want to make another comment there. If you're including the trustees on this, the trustees also need to do 300-foot notices for their, for applications to them.
Okay, I can amend that language as well.
Because anytime it's a public hearing, so the HPP does not have public hearings. The trustees do. So if they're reviewing a special use permit, or whomever is using a special use permit, a variance, a site plan application, I think all of those require public hearings. And so all of those, generally, the same things, the same steps apply to those that apply to us.
Okay, excellent. I can make those updates. Yeah, some of these things are just, I haven't been able to incorporate them because they haven't happened yet. So, and you know, Dorothea really takes care of the village board. I'm here to serve you guys and the HPP. But I can definitely add that, and thank you very much. I'm going to make sure that gets incorporated. Okay.
Just to comment, Mindy, do you have any thoughts on any things that should not be in the, on the village website?
For the PZBA?
Yes.
No.
No.
Anything that you guys are going to be considering in a public hearing should be posted.
So in general, my comment is, whatever meeting packet goes to us can go, be posted verbatim on the website. It doesn't need to be a separate one.
Yes.
Okay.
So in my opinion, as soon as it gets mailed, sent to us, just post it on the website. You don't need to wait.
I agree.
Sometimes things change a little bit. In which case, I think the norm is to just revise the packet on the website.
Right.
Yep.
So for the notices, if we can go back there, also, many of the PCB applications require a property sign to be posted on the property that's subject to the public hearing. That needs. I'm sorry, is that in there?
If I could just jump in for one second here, too, I believe that a member of the public, or maybe somebody related to one of the applications, might have just come in, and he may not be informed that we've postponed certain agenda items. Mr. Morabito? I can't recall if that was, I just wanted to, I believe we should let you know that some of the discussions that were previously planned for this meeting are being pushed off to a subsequent meeting.
Okay, is that because I was late? I was literally sitting in on the Pittsburgh, town of Pittsburgh, born. I was like, why am I not being called on the wrong one?
No, no, it's not, not your, not your issue at all. It was, it was a noticing, something they came up with noticing on our end. So I just wanted to let you know before you sat here for too long.
Okay, so then the 36 Monroe, then it's going to be pushed off?
Yes, Justin, Chairman, should we come up with a date for that?
Yes, April 5th. The official meeting is going to start at 6:30, and then the board is going to have a workshop starting at 6 o'clock that applicants do not need to attend, but we may discuss some of the things on the agenda. It's basically our meeting prep session.
Okay, great. Sorry to.
Monday, April 5th.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
We've done nothing with regards to the application at tonight's meeting, other than to say that that needs to happen. Or rescheduling.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
No, good. That was good.
Mindy, I think you were commenting.
Right on the sign.
On the sign. Right. So usually, that's another Steve, a Steve thing. He goes out and puts the signs on the property, but I can definitely put something in there as a reminder to him.
Well, I guess, what's the, does it make sense to maybe add some checkboxes for Steve's things, and then you're just checking that they've been done? Because really, what's extremely helpful is for us to know that, hey, all these steps were handled. Because if they weren't, then we have to figure out what to do about it. And so my suggestion would be to do, you know, things that are critical, that have to get done for it to be heard in their meeting, at least have a checkbox to verify it happened.
Right. Well, in that case, you need to add the 239M referral. At the very least.
That was 239. Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Do you have an open question, though? So this is this document, Marina, is this document for you to ensure that you're doing what you need to do for all applications? Because the more we add in here that other people have to do, where then you are essentially policing their work, creates this, makes this document unwieldy, or more unwieldy possibly than what you're looking for to do. So I just want to be careful that we're not suggesting something to your document that you don't want it to be.
Good point.
I understand. Yeah. There is that risk. I'm willing to toe the line to some extent with that to accommodate the board. But I do recognize that as well.
Because I don't think we're ever going to see this again. Right? And you're using this to help build up what you need it to be. And so I just, I guess I would recommend to be thoughtful as to what you're adding when it's not actually your responsibility, if you're trying to have it be a way to streamline your work.
Yep, that does make sense. I do want to kind of have it be something that, like, if any of you were to call with a question, I kind of keep these on a stand, so they're all stood up right on my desk. I can just look right over to it and be like, yep, Steve did this. Notices went out on this date, like, you know, kind of just give you guys a general breakdown of what's going on. So like, I am happy to add some of those things to an extent, but I do understand your concern as well. So I guess I'd kind of refer to you guys.
It's your list, so I refer to you.
All right.
I think there's two separate things that are commonly done. Marina has her checklist, and I thought that was a very good point you made, Dave. But then there's often a forum like this, that's a writer that goes with every application that tracks the steps through the process. And then you check if this step was done, or this step was not done. So I think there, it could be two separate things, and I don't think we've had that internal checklist. But oftentimes, it's on the application form, there's, there's a variety of ways that different people do that. But, uh, Marina, if you haven't gotten the, the hint by now, that stuff gets missed from time to time, and it causes problems. Um, that's why we're kind of going over some of this, and the, the general observation is, how do we minimize the procedural steps? Uh, and make sure they happen, so that's the important goal.
Yeah, I totally understand, and you know mistakes happen, but we gotta do our best to make sure they don't, you know?
Yeah, we, with the applicants get upset when we tell them, um, that we, when things get mishandled. And it impacts the timing of their project, so, and it happens, and we know mistakes happen, it, it, but, yeah.
Absolutely. All right, um, I'll, uh, I'll move right into notices then. Um, again, these top two items, these are for both the village board and the P C B A board. Um, that's sending the legal notice to publication, put the email in there for my own reference. Um, that timeline will change, I mean, I, it's all right as it is, as long as we have time. But that three to four weeks before meeting, I usually, I, that next part, I put a hard date in there, so I know exactly, like, when I'm sending it out. Um, just in case of that fluctuation for those Wednesday deadlines, by Thursday publication kind of situations. Uh, same with that second one, which is the notice to the residents, um, at least two weeks before the meeting, but, uh, also room for a hard date as well. Sending the packets to the board chair, I would like to provide those to you at least two weeks before the meeting. Um, but as early as possible, if, if you guys are looking for that, but, and again, a hard deadline for that as well, for myself. Um, the meeting notices to Ms. Tadio and Ms. Crane at the V P, that is, um. That is an informal notice, just a general notice of the meeting, uh, that I do for the village board. Um, I can do that for, I think, oh, actually, I think that's for all the boards, because there is no identifier there, so. A, a me- a meeting notice to those guys, informal, three to four days before the meeting. Um, sending the agendas to the other boards as a courtesy at that same time. Um, and then finally, posting the legal notices to the general code, uh, on the website.
Okay, I got a question about that last one, and maybe for Mindy. Is where do copies of our legal notices go to? Um. She sticks it in general, Dorothea sometimes has stuck them in general code, and no one is ever in their life gonna find them there. Um, but so. How should we be posting notices, the legal notices? Does it just go in our meeting packet? You're muted.
Sorry, um, yeah, just put them in the meeting packet, please, and save it to the property file. I don't understand why you would post it to the general code. Um. And I don't think this board has historic, go on.
What constitutes notice ten days in advance on the village website of a public hearing? Is that the meeting packets posted on the website ten days before the meeting?
Um, I believe that.
Go on.
Yeah, I was going to say, um, the legal notice, I believe, is the official, um. Document that dictates that the meeting is happening. Um, we turn it on, on the website before that happens. Um, so people are able to see on our website that a meeting is scheduled before it's officially, I guess, um, noticed.
Well, notices for public hearings, not the meeting.
Notices for public hearings.
Public hearings are added meetings, and not all, not everything necessarily requires a public hearing. Maybe you get, maybe that gets confusing. All of our applications do, so.
Right, I think that is the legal notice that we are referring to, the, the, the meeting itself. The, the meeting itself is noticed, um, in the paper, on that line where we, where it goes to. Um, Ms. Tadio and Ms. Crane, um, the content, the public hearings are noticed. Um, earlier, before that time.
No, the, the, the informal notices to Tadio and Crane are not the formal notices that are published in the newspaper. I think what we're required to do is to publish the no, you know, a specific legal notice in the newspaper. Um, the stuff that goes to Tadio and Crane, I think is an informal courtesy notice. But the content of the legal notice that is published, we call that the, the notice of the, the. There'll be an affidavit of publication that comes back from the newspaper, after it's published in the newspaper. That needs to be filed with the application and be made part of the, um, submission. The, the, the meeting packet.
So that application, that affidavit of publication is not in regards to the legal notice specifically for that property?
It is.
Okay, but you are also saying that a legal notice for the overall meeting must be sent out in that timeframe as well?
No, cuz the, the publ- the published notice refers to the meeting date.
Mm-hmm.
The other, i- if we were to have public meetings that were not public hearings. The publication of the public meeting in the, on the website would be sufficient public notice of the public meeting. But pretty much all of the applications, all the meetings that this board has are public hearings on applications. So they all must be noticed in a newspaper of general circulation within, you know, ten to fifteen days beforehand, blah, blah, blah. And the, when the newspaper publishes that public notice in the newspaper. They will send you an affidavit of publication.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Signed by the editor, whoever it is, does it, that will have, they'll attach a copy of the notice, and they'll give you an affidavit saying, we published this on this date in this newspaper. That affidavit needs to be part of this file, the property file, and part of the meeting packet file.
Okay, so the affidavit of publication must be included in the meeting packet?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so the other thing, Mindy, is per at least village code. Um, the posting of the note of, of legal notices, I believe that requires to go into the newspaper. It's also required to go on the village website, and it needs to go on the bulletin board at Village Hall.
Right.
And so the question is, how is that stuff posted on the village website? Because right now, I believe what Dorothea's directed her to do is put those legal notices in e-codes. Rather than, like, say on the calendar where we're actually going to discuss it. So, there's absolutely no one's gonna find it in e-codes, but it might fit the technical requirement of it being on the website.
Right, so it, no, it should go on the, yeah, so it's, it's there now, it's in the calendar. I just pulled up the website, so if you go to the Village of Pittsburgh calendar, you can go to the date. P C B A special, uh, P C B A meeting, it has, oh, it has the time and the date of the meeting, and it also has the packet. Which is, which is correct.
Okay, but I think the point is, that needs to be done ten days before the meeting, if that's gonna serve as our legal notice. A copy of the legal notice on the website.
Oh, I think I under, so, um, as long as the agenda and the legal notice are going up. At the same time that I'm sending them out to the paper, that's kind of what you're saying, Justin, it should happen.
Well, whatever you're sending out to the paper, okay, I believe, so what I'm looking at in our code was. I think it's two ten thirty-four.
It's.
Why don't I have it?
It's thirty-one dash, thirty-one point four, not thirty-four.
Okay. I lost my one page.
It's okay. The thirty-one point four, the media notices, says that the clerk shall cause the public notice to be posted. To the following media sources, the official newspaper of the village, and the official website of the village.
Does it stipulate that has to be two weeks?
Well, all of it says in here, require, all public notices shall be made ten days prior to the date of the scheduled public hearing.
Right, that's in two ten thirty-one dot two.
Okay.
So, what I'm wondering is, if we're, if the meeting packet posting is going to complete this requirement. Which does an excellent job of complying with notice requirements, then that has to be on ten days before a meeting.
Yes.
Oh, usually in the agenda, I put a notice. Is that not sufficient?
No.
I, 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 um, I might not be able to post the packet right away if there are, well, I mean.
Here's a suggestion, maybe what you could post is an agenda and the legal notices as one document.
Yes, I usually do that.
For page one would be the agenda, the, the agenda as it's known. And then pages two, three, and four would just be verbatim copies of your legal notices you sent out.
Okay, I, uh, I do it right now, the agenda and the COVID notice together, and that goes on the website. As soon as the deadline hits and we've got what we're gonna be doing. And then the packet usually comes at a later date, but I can put, um, that COVID notice and the legal notices. In with that, if that's what you're wanting.
I think that would satisfy the requirements, and it would be very obvious to the public in a place they could, that would make sense.
Right, can do.
So, the legal notice I'm referring to is your notice item one, which is whatever's going out to. Again, it's publishing, so that stuff you're sending them to print in the paper, that is what would go in. With this new document, which is agenda and notices.
Okay, gotcha.
And.
You, Mindy?
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, with respect to the notices, the, um, the COVID notice is like, really dated. It's like, it, it refers to the, and I'm, I'm not being critical, I'm just, I, I kind of chuckled when I read it. The, um, it refers to the last set of governor's orders, like, that were like from last summer. There've been like, a half a dozen more governor's orders extending that stuff, so we may just want to say pursuant to. The governor's executive orders and not list all of these things sequentially, because they're, you know, it's. You, you, otherwise you're gonna be updating it every month, with the latest executive order that extends the timeframe another thirty days. And the other thing is that there should be, um, one more section, one more sentence that says that comments can also be provided via email. Before and during the meeting to Marina at, um, at your email address.
All right, I will add that, um, Ms. Loda, did you wanna add something? I thought I saw you, okay.
Nope, I, I ate a grape.
Oh, okay. Um, all right then, that's excellent, uh, moving into the reminders portion. Um, just a little note for myself, um, to send separate emails, or also what I've been doing that I think works lately. Is, uh, putting the board in the B C C, the blind copy line, so that you get it as well. But the applicants are not seeing your email addresses, um, so if you happen to see that, just know that is why I do it that way. Um, then the two reminders, first reminder goes out to the board and the applicants one week prior with that date in there. Second reminder is the day of the meeting, um, under meeting section, um, just note to myself to remember to record. Um.
Hold on.
Okay.
The email notices, uh, that go to the, um, public that has requested to get notices. Which I think this has not been regularly happening, there is an email list for meetings, and people can request to be noticed about. Trustee meetings, or planning board meetings, or whatever, um, and then I think the village sometimes posts on Facebook. Um, and, you know, some meeting is going on, and, I, I mean, those two things, I think, are kind of up to. Not us to administer, but, um, those are, wherever notices are conventionally posted, it needs to happen. And I know on the village website, they at least, I think they still have a way to subscribe to this stuff, so I don't know what that, how that gets complied with.
Okay, I can look into that.
So basically, on that email list. Um, I think the intent of it is to, so that our residents can receive an email at their request to say. Nope, there's a meeting on this date, or a meeting was canceled on this date. Um, so people don't need to show up to meetings when they're canceled, and they get some notification of it. Or a special meeting has occurred, people like to know that, so there's a handle on very somewhat short notice. So, uh, the goal is to not require our residents to check the village website every day to see when meetings are scheduled. So they have some way of finding out about it.
Okay, I'll follow up with Dorothea to see if that is an option for our website. Um, okay, then.
There's a, there's a subscribed to updates section on the village website.
Okay.
Just, please check all of interest, it says newsletters, board of trustees, meeting agendas. A P R B meeting agendas, and P C B A meeting agendas. So I think the intent there is, if people want to request to get sent a copy of our agendas, they can join that email list. There may only be three people on that email list, I don't know.
You might have a lot of unsubscribes the first time you use it.
And my suggestion would be to, uh, put the board of trustees on that email list. So, all you do is send a note out to that one email list, and it goes to the board, then goes to the public, and they all get the same notice.
Okay, that's an excellent suggestion, okay. Okay, anything else on that section? All right, if not, then I'll move into the meeting section, um, and a reminder to myself to hit record. And I wanted to ask Justin as well, since he has been, um, officiating these meetings. Is there anything special that needs to be done for transcripts? Because I do, uh, Dorothea usually has go to meeting, kind of can spit out a transcript, that's okay. And then we go back and edit it, um, for my last H P B meeting, it didn't work out. So I just wanted to know if you are, A, setting those up, and B, if there's anything special that needs to be done every time.
Did it not come at all for the H P B meeting, it didn't make a transcript?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it was that I wasn't an admin, some kind of permissions issue. But when I, when I was done with my meeting, it, it didn't let me have one.
Yeah, check the, um, account settings on the website. If you log into your account there, there might be an option to check, uh, enable transcripts by default. I don't do anything every meeting for that, they, they just, um, but I, I think I might have done that once, and now they work all the time.
Okay, perfect, that's what I was.
Only other word of wisdom is the spotlight tool is really great, it's fun to, to use, so I would suggest you use that all over the place.
Yeah, awesome.
I'm just kidding, that doesn't have to go in the minutes.
All right, so, uh, then, you know.
Something that's not optional, um, the governor's orders do require us to make a transcript of the hearings available when we do these remotely.
Yes, um, and you know, uh, the matter with go to meeting is, um, you know, if it spits it out for me, really all I'm doing is reviewing it. And, you know, checking for errors and typos, things where people stumble and miss hear, um. If, if I don't, then I'm, I'm retyping the whole thing, and that, you know, that's, uh, that's time consuming. So if I, if it can be avoided, I'd love to do that, um, but if not, you know, it happens, I'll have to retype it for the H P B one, so.
Yeah, the only other issue that I've had with recording is that there's a, a default date that the recording is, um, available for when I share the link. Um, and, and then if you share that with somebody else, you've got to extend the, uh, that date. So, you probably just want to grab the recording quickly after and, and post it on YouTube, I think it's probably the easiest way to go.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, I've got one more comment that is, that is off topic, which is, I was really impressed with the footers that you put at the bottom of the meeting packets. With the, with the date of the me- the meeting and the version of the meeting. with the, with the date of the, the meeting and the version of the meeting packet and the page number of the meeting packet. That's a tremendous upgrade. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make sure to keep it on there, keep it updated. Um, alright, then, uh, going into the post-meeting section, this is more just kind of housekeeping things for me, making up the minutes, any corrections to them, um, posting things, the recording to YouTube, um, linking the YouTube to the website. Um, oh, that doesn't make any sense. I'll have to change the order. I can't make corrections to minutes if they haven't been created yet, so I'll have to move those around. Then, um, working on the transcript. So the transcript, I believe, um, did you say it has to be within 30 days? So I do have a little bit of time, which is why I put it a little further down the list. Um, minutes, I try to get done and back to you so that they can be approved for the next meeting. Um, so I put those higher up on the list. Um, then the minutes get posted to the website and the general code. And Justin, that kind of addresses your concerns from before. Um, minutes do not only go to general code. It looks like Linda has a section where she is posting minutes for the PZBA and the HPB right on the website. Um.
I think that's the only place it needs to go. Um, we've never made much use of general code. And I don't think anybody in the village, uh, looks for that other than maybe the office staff. Cause that's, that's known as where the zoning code is. It's not known as where the meeting minutes live.
Okay, then I might have to amend that. Um, I know Dorothea definitely puts the village board trustees' agendas in there. So I will amend that so that it does not suggest that the PZBA has to go up there either. Um, then finally, um, is to prepare approval letters, resolutions. Um, in this case, um, we'll be working on your findings of fact. Um, and then finally, making sure all that information gets to Sophie for her record keeping and makes it into the file.
Yeah, Mindy, do you have any comments on filing? I know that's something that's near and dear to your heart.
I just jumped up again and I was on mute, so you didn't get to see me and hear me jump at the same time. Um, the approval letters and resolutions, at the same time that they're sent to the applicants, they also need to be date stamped as filed and filed with the village clerk.
Okay.
And that's important because technically that's the event that triggers the commencement of the statute of limitations to challenge that determination.
Okay.
So theoretically, if it's never chat, if it's never filed, then the limitations period to challenge it never starts, which would be a very bad thing.
Okay, and we would definitely want to be sending a filed copy to the applicants as well.
That would be terrific.
Alright.
Thank you, Mindy, that was a good comment.
And Marina made it even better by suggesting that the copy that gets sent to the applicant is date stamped filed. Never seen that happen.
From working in a law firm myself.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's great practice. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, that, that's very helpful to have the, uh, both the application materials and the ultimate decisions all date stamped. So when anyone questions it, you know, what's, what was what?
Perfect.
Right, and if you ever need to refer to it, you know who saw what when.
Alright, um, I think we've had a lot of time talking about some of this procedural stuff. My suggestion is let's get through meeting minutes and unless there's any other things people really want to get into, we can call it a wrap after that. Thank you Marina for going over that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well done.
Thank you very much.
Marina, this is a packet V3, right? Was there only one copy of the V3?
Um, yes, the first two versions, I think I only sent to Justin.
That's fine, so we're just making sure we're all looking at three and that's what we want. That was also very helpful to have a version number of the document. Thank you.
Yeah, and normally we don't send out multiple versions, so norm, as long as we get, um, sorted out fairly early on, um, some applicants aren't supposed to submit anything the week before the, the meeting. If it's just sent out on that Friday afternoon, the week before, that should be good to go.
Okay.
Do you want me to share the minutes? Does that help out?
Yeah, that would be great.
Just one second here, let me adjust my screen size.
I have a new printer, so of course I couldn't print.
Uh, is this the first one, January 11th, I think? Is there one above it?
Page 38.
Now, was this a workshop session or was this their actual meeting? I think this might have been a workshop.
Special workshop.
Special workshop.
Yes, and I couldn't, I couldn't find in Linda's files that this had been done. Um, so I included it just to make sure that you guys have seen it and, uh, if, if it needs to be approved, that it gets approved.
And we don't generally have meeting minutes for workshops because there isn't any action taken.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think we had significant discussion at this one, so.
It just, it creates a precedent, right? So if we're gonna publish the, it's from a special meeting, a special workshop meeting, then what happens at the next meeting that we do a special workshop where there is some discussion that's not reduced to writing? I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but you know, I think we should think about whether we want to be consistent about that.
Um, usually we, uh, the norm has been whatever workshop sessions are prior to our meeting, that 30-minute session is usually to help the board prepare for the meeting and, uh, identify areas of discussion to have in the meeting. But we were all over the map as to what we discussed in there, but the general point is anything of significance gets repeated in the regular meeting. So we don't necessarily need to keep, um, minutes of that because we just, we, it's there to throw out bad ideas and then the good ideas are carried over into the meeting. Um, maybe that's not the best way of expressing it, but, um, this was a kind of a different session here where we actually had some additional discussion, preliminary discussion about the project. But again, there's nothing here that was, that led to a final action.
Okay.
And it wasn't just the board that was discussing it as we would normally do in a workshop. It included the applicants.
And we talked to the applicants, yes, and they, uh, see there's some comments in here.
So that's why it was different.
Well, it was a special meeting and it included the applicants. Um, I believe the comments I heard from Dorothea is that if we're having a special meeting and to go over whatever is on, um, public business, it makes sense to include that in, uh, include at least basic minutes of that.
Uh, going forward, if you want to reach out and determine situations where you want minutes taken and, um, I, I can, I can make that caveat, um, so that, you know, we're not assuming that minutes are needed for just any regular workshop session.
So in terms of this, these minutes, um, I don't see any objection to having this, having minutes for this meeting. It makes, I mean, there, the, it captures the record of what was discussed, so I don't have any objections to that. Um, any thoughts from anybody else? I, I hear your concerns, Mindy, that it's helpful for us to be consistent.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I'm not for having minutes to workshops. I think the workshops are, you know, kind of this place where we can, um, you know, think things through a little, a little bit, collect, to collect thoughts. Um, especially because this has never been an issue before. I think, uh, I, I would, I, I don't, I, I wouldn't be for, uh, having workshops be, uh, having minutes for them. I understand this one. I kind of have mixed feelings about this one, but I think, um, I don't, I don't, I don't see the need for minutes for a workshop, for a normal workshop.
I agree.
Having gone back and, and looked at a bunch of, uh, minutes to understand things recently, I, I could also see that, um, having too much information in, in a place where it's not curated and, and leading to a final product in a linear way, it could also be pretty confusing to understand what happened.
So, um, I guess the decision is to do, is to approve or, or deny these minutes. I, I'm not sure what would happen if, if they were to be denied. I guess they just don't get posted.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm not saying they, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't approve these. I, I just question the value of minoting workshops going forward. I'd rather not.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so as a thought then to go ahead and approve these, um, since there was some useful discussion here and just not typically take them, um, I guess we'd have to give direction to Marina as to the nature of a special meeting as to whether it's an actual, um, continuation of a review or if it's just a workshop where board members are just sharing some thoughts that aren't really, aren't necessarily of the ultimate decision.
I mean, it's, I mean, how often do we have special workshop meetings?
Not often.
I can hardly remember another one. We have special meetings all the time. We have workshops all the time, but.
Yeah, so when we're, we're going over stuff like the comp plan and the, um, the, what was the other big one? The, uh, eight acts of transportation plan, we had meeting after meeting after meeting on those. And they were mostly to gather our thoughts and then we gathered our thoughts and they're rolled into findings.
Yeah.
And then the findings document got published.
That's really a different piece though. I mean, those were, um, meetings that you had in connection with making recommendations on proposed zoning changes, not in connection with an application that was before you.
I think it was an LWRP review for one of them. One, two, I don't know, was that an application or referral?
I think it ended up being a little of both.
Application.
So Mindy, if we have some meetings to gathers, we'll, we'll just call it gathering our thoughts. And then those get used to make, um, we do a later write-up of findings. Um, our findings are supposed to represent our discussions. If we're not taking minutes of those, any of those discussions, um, I'm just wondering what, what goes on with that.
Yeah, I think that you can, the, you don't have to have proof of every single substantive discussion that you have. I mean, some, some boards have really bare-bones minutes that don't go into the amount of depth that your minutes go into. Um.
And, you know, in, in the event, if after the fact you decide the, a meeting should have minutes, um, again, I can access, um, all the, special workshops aren't necessarily recorded, but I do take notes, um, throughout. So I can probably compile minutes based off the notes that I take and then present them to the board if you want to add anything into them as if they were general meeting minutes.
Alright, well, if the board thinks. Again, now, uh, for the time being, and let's start through these minutes. And then I think when we have future sessions, we'll just have to have a discussion as about, um, before each of these meetings, cause are we gonna do minutes or not? I think that makes sense, so, um, so is the agreement to just go ahead and use these minutes, um, including revisions people have? I'm good with that.
Sounds good.
So this is the January 11th, 2021 meeting. So does anyone have any, um, changes, revisions or what to make?
I did not have anything on this set of minutes.
I'm good.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January 11th, 2021 as drafted. And I think we need to do a call, Marina.
And, uh, Ms. Loda, was that you second?
Me, uh, Shannon.
Shannon, okay. Um, member Marshall? Member Marshall? Uh-oh, I think we lost sound. He said thumbs up, so we'll take that.
I'm here now.
Oh, great.
I've got the green light saying I'm talking, but then I had another device that had mute on it, so whatever.
Interesting. Okay, member Lightgab?
Hi.
Alright, member Loda?
Hi.
Member Shannon?
Hi.
Chairperson Valistra?
Hi.
Alright, motion carries.
Let me know if I'm going too fast or anything on the screen share. I, I just, uh, I didn't really have too many corrections on these minutes. There were three names that I saw misspelled, um, and I can't remember which set they were in, so, um, that's what I'm looking for.
Was it Mr. Dunlevy?
Yeah, uh, so the, the three and Marina, I don't know if you could just maybe, uh, search and, and replace, um, in this PDF and then correct them. Um, but it was Mr. Dunlevy, his, uh, the L was capitalized. I don't think he capitalizes the L in the middle of the name. Um, the second one was, uh, Pierre, I think it is, Herro, um, and it's spelled H E R O X in one place. And, um, and it should be H E R O U X, I believe. And then my name is misspelled in one of them. It's, it's spelled as L I E and it should be L E I.
Yep, I can find and replace those and make those corrections.
Great, thank you.
Okay, are we on the, Marina, did you finish your lookups of that? So we're on the next set of minutes, which is January 20th. Were there any other changes that anyone had?
Nope.
Not here.
Okay, if we're good, then I will make a motion to approve the January 20th, 2021 minutes with the revisions noted.
Second.
Marina? If you're up.
Okay, Marshall?
Hi.
Member Lightgab?
Hi.
Member Loda?
Hi.
Member Shannon?
Hi.
And chairperson Valistra?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, so the next minutes are the 22nd. And I just want to point out that the resolutions are all in here. It sounded like people didn't get a separate email of the resolutions. So if anyone has any comments on any of those resolutions of approval, then, you know, feel free to chime in with those. Otherwise, if we're good with them, I'll make sure those get signed in the next couple of days and we'll send them to the applicants.
I have a comment or question on the rear home addition under actions. It lists installation of basement egress window and modifying dimensions of front portico posts. We didn't do that, did we? Did I miss something? We didn't do that.
I'm okay with leaving it as rear home additions.
Yeah, the other things we didn't talk about.
It might be part of the application, but we didn't explicitly look at it.
Oh, right, okay.
Maybe those are before the HPV.
It did go before the HPV, and I believe the HPV approved it without issues.
And then also, where you've got historic preservation review board, there's no review, it's just HPV, historic preservation board. Couple of times, Marina, that was the only thing I saw.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and this was to Resolution 2021-1 for Courtney Circle we're discussing. So the amendments we agreed to was getting rid, abbreviating the action to just state the home addition and fixing the name of historic preservation board.
Right.
All right, I'll make that change tomorrow.
Yeah, I think this is the one on page six, so page 50 and 51 with the name substitutions primarily.
Yeah. Oh, and your name, Justin, in the motion.
Thanks, yes.
I didn't check to see if the resolutions and the motions match as to who made the motion and who seconded it.
I can double-check that.
I mean, ultimately, it doesn't, they just need to be the same. So if one differs, you know, it's fixing to be the same.
Are we considering the motion, or I'm sorry, the minutes and the resolutions as kind of together, or do we, do you want to approve the minutes separately and then dive into the resolutions?
Usually they're part of the minutes, but however we want to do it, they all need to revise them all and approve it all.
Okay.
So let's, so I think it makes sense to consider the resolutions as part of the minutes, so we can just go through the whole set of them. So let's just, informal discussion here, first of all, the minutes portion of it. Did anyone have any other changes other than the spelling changes?
Is Sewer also spelled incorrectly? Sue, S E W A R, should be E R, right?
Should be E R.
Okay.
50, page 54.
Also on page 57, I see that misspelling. Okay, stuff else in the minutes, if we're looking at Resolution 1, at the, the action and the spell, and the change in the HPV name, were there any other changes that you wanted? I'm hearing a whole lot of nothing, so let's go on to the next one, 2021-2.
Marina, you got that second historic preservation and under conditions on page 58, the review. The name's wrong, the review needs to come out.
All right.
Okay, on to the next resolution then, if there are no more comments on this one. So this is dash three.
Just a comment for myself, I will find a way to pull up the last whereas paragraph onto the page with the, with those last ENF bullets.
I'm not sure if that's that important, but.
I don't know how important it is either, but the numbering is, we've got two, two number ones. The rear edition is number one, and then the the resolution numbers.
I think it depends on which version of the minutes you're looking at. The ones that were sent out last, last week on Monday, I think had them misnumbered. I think the one currently online, I think they're correct.
Oh, okay.
You were saying we had two resolutions that were 2021-1, Joanne?
Yes. I haven't, I don't know, I went over and had them print it for me, so I don't know what version she printed.
This is on page 53. You can tell by the footer at the bottom, left, in the left corner. Packet version number.
No, I don't have a version number on mine.
Okay.
I would think that's the first, or the first version then, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, I only see one occurrence of that resolution number.
Okay, good.
Okay, are there any other changes to that third one then? This is a variance for Jennifer Collins. We went, we discussed that length in all the meetings.
I don't have anything else on this.
Okay, then there's number four as well, which is the second variance. And it looks like it's, is that missing a page?
Yeah, the last page needs to be switched out.
So there should be a page 65. So Resolution 21, 2021-4 is missing a last page on here, where it has the signature and the vote.
Okay. I have that one. Re-merging the packet, so I can, I can post a newer version with that last page in there to the website, and it should, it ends it. I'm sorry?
So we just need to finalize the resolutions with that last page in there. So the minutes that are posted on the website are approved, and what we send out, what I sign and we send out to the applicant. But the board, that last page that's missing is just to show unanimous approval of the variance.
Okay.
Well, I have that last page and that first version, so it's there.
Yeah, that was, that must have been my mistake when I was re-merging the document and creating new.
So basically, it's going to match what's on page 62.
Yes, it'll be the whereas paragraph.
So with those revisions, I just, I would make a motion to approve those minutes. Now, you can see the date of the minutes. Okay, so it's February 22nd, so I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 22nd as revised.
Second.
Hey Marina, you up?
Okay, member Marshall?
Hi.
Member Lightgab?
Hi.
Member Loda?
Hi.
Member Shannon?
Hi.
And chairperson Valistra?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay. That gets us through our minutes and our initial discussion, and my feeling is I'm talked out.
We covered a lot of ground.
Yes, thank you, everybody, and I think we need to owe Mr. Lightgab another thank you. I believe this is your last meeting, so thank you for your service on the board. You've made many very good contributions, thank you.
Sure, well, I appreciate it. It's been a pleasure working with the board, and thank you all for, for helping me to learn and for working on these projects with me. It's been my pleasure.
You set the bar pretty high for us, Justin, thanks.
Yeah, you're a hard act to follow, that's for sure.
Well, thank you very much.
Motion to close? You want to make a motion?
I make a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, everyone. Thank you again, Mr. Lightgab. Thank you, Marina, for going through your nice checklist. That was good.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mindy, very much.
Yeah. Good work, looking out, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.